Yep, seven o'clock. Meeting called to order. This is the May 28th, 2024 Borough of Oakland Council Meeting. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 p.m. unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
Well, rise for the Pledge of Lead. Tallamini, would you plead us to the Pledge of Lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for a moment of silence, please. BCUA, thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Here.
Councilman McCann? Councilman Pignotelli? Council President Salianni?
Here.
Councilman Slusinski? Councilman Tallamini?
Here.
We have a motion to excuse Councilman Slusinski and McCann, please.
And Pat, also.
Pat's gonna be running. He's, Pat's on an ambulance, call him, he'll be around 7:15. So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, for the mayor's report, let's jump into the good news here concerning the dump. We received a written communication today, which was dated from last week, concerning the status of the dump, and we really may, we have some very good news about this. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna cut right through the chase, and I'm gonna let our borough attorney address our correspondence that we received and the significance of it moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you know, the applicant had filed for a Class B recycling center, and they had made application to the BCUA, and then to the commissioners upon a favorable recommendation for inclusion in the solid waste management program. It's one of the new changes to the law from the last time they had done this, was they had to hold a hearing in the Borough of Oakland. That hearing occurred at such time, the mayor's, the member of the mayor, the council members all came in attended. I was there, I asked questions of their experts. Mr. Yuchemek put forward testimony regarding the engineering concerns of the borough. Our planner had submitted a report regarding that it was not a permitted use in the zone. Our environmental commission submitted its own report, and numerous individuals from the municipalities submitted their objections to the project. Subsequent to this, towards the beginning of this year, the BCUA submitted a letter to the applicant consisting of 15 questions that they further wanted information on regarding things such as their, that were raised during the hearing, such as their noise control, their odor control, their dust control, environmental impact, stormwater impact. The applicant did not respond to this letter. They then subsequently received additional notice that if they did not respond to this letter, their application would be dismissed at the May 23rd, 23rd meeting. They did not respond, and as such, the BCUA administratively dismissed their application with no further action required at this time. And that is where we stand as of now. It has been administratively dismissed for lack of providing the information that was required.
Thank you, councillor. And we will be putting together a Facebook post with all the pertinent information so that we can distribute it out to the public, so that the general public understands exactly, you know, we had a good win here, so let's, you know, Oakland's very fortunate in the fact that we were able to put the halt to this. So, thank you, councillor. All right, the second big announcement I have is paving. So, the Oakland paving program has begun. We are currently working on the sidewalk cutouts, ADA ramps, and the following streets will be paved. First one, Lakeside Boulevard. Second one will be Monthegan Ave, Taramapo Hills Boulevard. I see a lot of people smiling in the room here. Been waiting a long time for that. Hiawatha Boulevard, follow by Hiawatha Boulevard. Then Truman Boulevard, emergency exit coming out of the reserve. We're gonna be replacing that. Woods End, the emergency access road coming out of the reserve on the Glen Gray side will also be repaved, so we'd make better access for the residents. Jerome Avenue, Lakeview Terrace, portion of that. River Road will be repaved. Lawler Drive, going to the Rec Field from 202 down to Butternut, that's pretty rough, that's gonna be repaved. The police station lot, East Oak Street, when you come around East Oak Street to Yaupau Avenue, we did all the trench work for the sewers, that section's gonna also be repaved. Raritan Road's gonna be repaved, Shelley Street, and the end of Spear Street. I know a lot of people are asking about Yaupau. Yaupau is coming out of a state grant, and that will be paved in the fall with concrete work and everything going up Yaupau, so we have a lot of, we have a lot of paving going on. And I still haven't made the announcement yet for PSENG, for the work that they did digging up the roads in Oakland. We expect them to be paved either in July or August. Once we get a firm date from them, I'll make that announcement, and certainly we'll notify the residents. Patriots Way Bridge update. We had a pre-con meeting last week. I'm happy to announce that they are going to start deploying equipment and resources in the second and third week of June, so you're gonna see a lot of movement. They're gonna be ramping up very quickly for starting to work on the bridge and get that bridge replaced, so you're gonna see a lot of action taking place on that. Okay, our Memorial Day Parade was a success. I certainly want to take some time out to thank the Public Events Committee, the American Legion, the DPW, all the volunteers that showed up. It was a very successful day. I also want to recognize our friends at the American Legion. They were the ones that provided the American flags for the downtown, going from Long Hill Road all the way down to Yaupau Avenue, so we have flags up there in cooperation, working with the borough and the DPW. We are still working on the Hometown Heroes program. You're gonna see that for next year, so next year's Memorial Day Parade or Veterans Day, you will see the Hometown Heroes banners. This will be brought forward by the committee to the governing body to choose which one we want to go with, and those will be indeed raised next year. Bush Plaza update. As you can tell, there's a lot of soil being moved down there. The streetlight, the concrete pedestals are already in place. We're waiting for the streetlights to be made at this point. Looks like they're doing most of the groundwork, and we're gonna be putting the seating, and the electrical work is now complete along with the sprinkler system. Okay, early voting starts tomorrow, May 29th, and it runs through June 2nd. Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The information is gonna be on the Oakland website, so you can find out where all the locations are available and where all the ballot drop-off boxes are. We have one in Oakland right next to Borough Hall in front. We have Oakland Fever Pitch, Oakland by the Oakland Recreation Commission. Join us to celebrate Oakland's baseball and softball seasons and teams. Parade Down Canyon of Heroes, introduction of Baseball and Softball Team Sports Association, Oakland Hall of Fame induction. We're gonna have Bouncy Castles, Dunk Tank, DJ, and other fun things. Hot dogs, cotton candy, snow cones, fresh fruit and refreshments. It's gonna be this Saturday, June 1st, at 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. down at the Rec Field. We also have our Sunday hikes, June 2, June 2, 9:00 a.m. Meet at the Lower Lot on Skyline Drive. If anybody's interested in hiking around the lake, I usually go every month. It's really a nice walk-around, going around Ramapo Lake at the top and coming on down. Okay, the Arts Pavilion. The Oakland in Arts and Great Oak Park Committee is excited to announce the much-anticipated grand opening of the Arts Pavilion at Great Oak Park on Sunday, June 8th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. Join us for a fun-filled day for all ages, featuring Oakland's finest performing artists, including special appearances by local favorites. They are the core, No Picnic, international award-winning finger stylist Mark Spanga, the Rampow Indian Hills Teacher's Band, Unprofessional Development, featuring Mr. Clark and the Incredible Dance Theater of New Jersey. Additionally, a selection of local makers and bakers will be showcasing their creations, so get your family and friends together, grab a blanket, get some bug spray and sunblock. It's gonna be a great day in Oakland, see you on June 8th. That's upcoming also. And we have the Oakland Carnival, June 12th, Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. June 13th, Thursday, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. June 14th, Friday, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. June 15th, Saturday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00. Special needs will have an opportunity to participate from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. The rides will be running slower, less noise, less blinky lights, so it'll be making enjoyable experience for those that need a little extra help. Risk bands, unlimited rides, it's gonna cost you 40 bucks, and you can prepay for $35. Go to Oakland-NJ.org for more information, purchase your risk bands, and how to go back to the matter. What else? Okay, we have a couple of awards that we received on behalf of the OCC. The OCC is certainly making, the communication's making Oakland proud. First one I have is from the Jersey Access Group. Hereby grants award of distinction, Christmas and Hanukkah light ceremony, 1,200 public ceremony, multi-camera, Oakland Borough TV, New Jersey, May 16th, 2024. Thanks, guys, in the back. We have more. We have Jersey Access Group hereby grants award of distinction, Veterans Day Ceremony, 1,100 public ceremony, single camera, TV, Borough of Oakland, New Jersey, May 16th, 2024. And the last one is Jersey Access Group hereby grants the Gold Award for the Oakland Council Meetings, award of February 28th, 2023, 1,000 public meeting, multi-camera, Oakland TV, Borough of Oakland, New Jersey, May 16th, 2024. Thanks, guys, you're doing a great job in the back. You make us look good, you make the town look good, and really help us move our message forward. So, thank you. One more. And we have the Award of Excellence, Oakland Council Meeting, February 28th, 2023, 1,000 public meeting, multi-camera, Oakland TV Girl of Oakland, New Jersey, New Jersey Access Group, May 16th, 2024. So, thank you, guys. So, you got guys really, you're doing great stuff for the town. Thank you.
Mayor?
Sir?
I'd just like to say they could never do it without me. Thank you, guys.
We'll go that far, Russ. All right, with that, we have open for public comments. Have a motion open to public.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor? Anybody wish to address the council?
Hi, Ally Fleeson, 224 Hiawatha Boulevard. First, Oakland Pride is having our Pride Festival. We're hosting it with the Elks, at the Elks with the Pons and Messiah Lutheran. It is June 23rd from 1:00 to 5:00, and you all are welcome. We'd love to have you. We also have Starphone Drive on June 15th, the Green Team. The Green Team. And also, this Thursday at the Oakland Senior Center, we will have our Flow Green Film Festival. It is from 6:30 to whenever we finish. We're viewing The Pollinators. It's a documentary about pollinators in America. And we also have two speakers. One is from Lorimer. She's one of their nature experts. And also, Werf's Honey, the guy in town that sells honey over on Long Hill Road, he's gonna be coming and speaking about raising bees and also, you know, gathering honey and that type of thing. And that's it, I think, for my events.
Thank you, Al, appreciate it. Anybody else wish to address the council?
Hi, Carrie Sereniti, 41 St. Avenue. All right, so just a couple of things. On the Resolution 24-161, change order number one, Bush Plaza Park, I wasn't able to find that anywhere. I don't know if it's on, well, it's not on the website, I couldn't find it.
It was pulled.
Okay. Okay.
It's gonna be carried to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Also, ordinance 24 capital, 945. It appears that the funds are being taken out of the open space funds, which I believe that you guys approved, to appropriate those funds. I understand that part of it, but is there a plan in place to replenish the funds without forcing an open space tax increase? So, if somebody can please answer that. Thank you.
So, you will have an opportunity for the, for this, this is gonna be open to the public?
I'll read it again?
Anybody else?
No, go ahead.
Hi, Frank Rotacco, 51 Lake Shore Drive. Just here, again, on behalf of the residents of Crystal Lake and Mirror Lake. You know, I've spoken here a few times before about our need for support from the town. You know, I'm happy, I'm happy to, you know, say that we're, we are planning on setting up a meeting, hoping that something is coming together. We're, you know, we're trying to form a small committee to meet with the town and with RML, to sort of come to some sort of agreement or a plan that will help us move forward. The important thing I wanted to state today, in tonight's meeting, is I want to make it clear that there is, there is a concerned group of lakefront homeowners that is, is serious and is making an effort to form a nonprofit, so that if RML wants to transfer the lakes, the dams, to another party, that people that live on the lakes and care for the lakes can be that party that receives those properties and manages them and can take care of them. The issue, as stated before, is, you know, we need to know that we, we have some source of funding or some way to move forward with the big financial challenges that come along with those properties, that the dam needs to be repaired. There's a lot of costs associated that a handful of lakefront homeowners can't take on and manage ourselves. This is where we really need help from the town. Time is of the essence. RML is, is moving forward with, you know, listing properties such as Mirror Lake, and also now, most recently, we've heard they're actively working with another, another third party to transfer Crystal Lake and potentially the Crystal Lake Dam, too. I don't know who that third party is, but my, my position, and I think the other lakefront homeowners that are here tonight and that we've been working with, is that the lakes really should go to a group that lives on the lake or cares for the lake and has a vested interest in the properties and the community, rather than, you know, some developer or some other, you know, third party who, you know, we don't really know what their, what their motivation will be in the future and what they'll want to do with those properties. So, I just wanted to come here again and just, you know, reiterate, you know, my concerns and our need for help from the town. I know you're already all aware, and I know that we're already moving towards scheduling a meeting, so I do, I do really appreciate that the town has become engaged with this issue and that is responding to us, listening to us, and I'm hoping that we're getting close to some sort of solution soon that really protects the lakes and also protects, protects the interests of, you know, the lakefront homeowners and the people who love the lake, either for, either for the beach club or just for, you know, the environmental benefits that it provides. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Steve Penuzzi, 69 Glen Gray. My first comment is on behalf of the Communication Commission, the Oakland Communication Commission and TV Committee. We'd like to thank the governing body for acknowledging all the accolades and things that we've been able to pull off for the town and the recognition that has gone with it. And also, we'd like to thank, in advance of some of the capital investment approvals that are forthcoming in this meeting, that will help streamline the production and the broadcast and transmission of the mayor and council meetings and some of the other things that, that we produce through the year. And then the last comment that I'd like to make is, as a resident of Oakland, the governing body and specifically Mr. Mayor, the update that you provide every month, it's very interesting for me to read, everything that you had said early in the year, working the list of initiatives and seeing the results and progress in these monthly updates, so I'm looking forward to the next one. And I'd like to thank the governing body for, more selfishly, the folks that live on Glen Gray. I can share with you that whatever, whatever the town is doing to help manage and control the traffic that we see on Glen Gray, it's, it goes up and down, but it's improving, and I know that there's other initiatives that are being worked on to help that situation out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Alexandria Evans, 141 Lake Shore Drive. So, along with what Frank Rotacco had to say, thank you so much for getting back to us so quickly after the last mayor and council meeting. We received your correspondence about wanting to meet with us the day after, and you supplied us with three dates. We accepted one, but for some reason, the borough wasn't able to do that date, and then there was a second one, and we weren't able to do that date either. You know, the borough came back to us and said that date didn't work either. This morning, we received two more dates, and the only concern I have is that the date is, the dates are okay, but the hour, 5:00 p.m., is really hard for, you know, representatives, family members of the lakefront homeowners that have demanding jobs and demanding, you know, family obligations. So, 5:00 p.m. is very difficult. We would like to try to make that 7:00 p.m. so that, you know, we can all make it there, representative for each group. The other thing is that, you know, I'm trying to understand why the borough insists on having just one representative from each of the groups when it's, as I said, a demanding time for them. You know, they all have families, they all have demanding work schedules. We asked that we have two representatives for Crystal Lake, two for Mirror Lake, and two for Crystal Lake Community Beach. It's what we agreed on early on, when we formed the committee months ago. It is what will be easiest for each representative to be able to juggle work, family, and this, you know, issue that we have to figure out. So, I'm hoping that the borough will give us a more reasonable hour and accept that we have two people for each of those lake communities. Okay? Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Kevin Gallo, 1 Pool Hall Road.
Sorry, what was your name?
Kevin Gallo, on 1 or 8 Pool Hall Road. I just felt, based on the news, the really great news about the dump being dismissed, I just felt compelled to come up and just give a sincere thank you to the council and to the mayor and everyone, really going above and beyond, getting, you know, organizing the meeting with the commissioners, and I'm getting texts all day from people in the neighborhood just sending me the, you know, the great news. Everyone's extremely happy, and I just felt it was, it was due to come up and say just a sincere thank you for everyone, everything that you did for that. Great, greatly appreciated, and great news, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anybody else?
Hi, Joseph Furio, 24 Hiawatha. Again, I'm here to talk about the RML situation. You know, as I was getting ready to come, I took a step out on my back deck and I heard some kids. I looked over to the right at the RML property at 1970. You know, we had about six or seven kids running around in the park, and what I saw about four parents. And ever since you put in that sidewalk, I've seen a lot of people walking on the sidewalk and stopping to use that park. If anything, more people are using the park now than ever. It is an asset to the community, you know. I can speak as a Mirror Lake resident. If I want to sit up at the lake, I'm just walking to the lakeshore in my backyard, I'm not going to use the park myself, but it's an asset. We all know it's an asset. It's a great thing to have, it's part of our community. You know, Frank and Alex, they kind of updated you on what was going on. The biggest development I see is actually what was not written. Mirror Lake was not part of any of the discussions RML had with this nonprofit or in any of the public announcements they made. I have no idea what, what's going on with Mirror Lake, and anything we can do to save that there are 21 homes on here. We have another gentleman here who's on Mirror Lake, and I know we had two or three other people who have been to these meetings regularly, and we all want to see it stay, we want to see it thrive. You know, I want to hear, it's going to be included in whatever the future is of RML, and I'm willing to contribute, you know, in any way possible. If they want funds, if, whatever I can do, I'm willing to help, and I'm sure most of the residents. We just want to know that the Oakland that we love the way it is now, we want to see that preserved for the future, and I, again, thank you for hosting the, this meeting between RML and the council, and I'm looking forward to doing some good things with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Leema Mason at 114 Lake Shore Drive. I wanted to give you an update on Crystal Lake Community Beach. We opened over the weekend, and we have signed a contract with RML to begin the sale to Crystal Lake Community Beach, so that is, we're under contract, that's in process. In the meantime, we signed a lease to cover the period in between, so we're operating the beach. And we had our open house over the weekend, where all Oakland residents were able to come, and it was very well-attended. We're, next weekend, we're having the Fathers Club hold a fundraising event at the beach, and that's always, well, last year was the first time they did it, but it was a, it was a great event, and so we're looking forward to having them again. And again, that's open to anyone in Oakland who wants to come and enjoy the barbecue that the Fathers Club's putting on. They're gonna have music, live music playing, but I just wanted to give an update that, you know, we're up and running, and we are moving forward with our contract of sale with RML. And I think there's one more thing, and I can't remember right now, so I'll come up again later if I have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not seeing anybody? Motion closed.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Let the minutes reflect that Mr. Pignotelli walked in about 10 minutes ago.
7:30.
Thank you. All right, we have approval of minutes, May 14th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any changes? All favor?
Aye.
Pretty good. Executive minutes, May 14th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anybody have any changes or comments? Has to be done in executive session. Not seeing anything? All favor?
Aye.
All right, special announcements. Number one, approve social affairs permit for the Oakland, New Jersey BPO Elks Lodge 2167 for the Oakland Pride event on June 23rd from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Oakland Elks Lodge located 33 Yaupau Valley Road, Oakland, New Jersey. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Abstain.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Tallamini?
Yes.
Okay, we've got number two. We have that authorized raffle license RL 1501 for the Oakland PBA, 164 for a 50/50 on June 7th, 2024, for the benefit of families and organizations. Be held at the Knights of Columbus 7 Courthouse Place, Oakland, New Jersey.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Authorized raffle license RL 1502 for the Oakland PBA, 164 for a casino night on June 7th, 2024, for the benefit of families and organizations at the Knights of Columbus 7 Courthouse Place, Oakland, New Jersey. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Approve social fair permit for Oakland PBA, 164 for a 50/50 casino night on June 7th, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Knights of Columbus 7 Courthouse Place, Oakland, New Jersey. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Have the record show that you just joined the meeting at 7:30? Thank you, Kevin. All right, we're up to resolutions. We have pulled 24-161. We have 24-172, Chapter 159, Bulletproof Vest Partnership. 24-173, Chapter 159, Shared Service Agreement for SLEO. 24-174, Approved Refund of Recreation Fees. 24, we're gonna pull 24-175. 24-176, Authorize and Hire Seasonal DPW Laborer. 24-177, Appoint a Substitute School Crossing Guard. 24-178, Authorize Carnival Co-Sponsorship with the Oakland Fire Department Association. 24-179, Adopt Complete Streets Policy. 24-180, Hire Summer Camp Staff for 2024. Anybody wish to call any out? Do we have a motion for consent agenda for 24-172, 173, 174, 176, 77, 78, 79, and 80?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, we've got 24-175, Annual Appointment of the Municipal Representatives for the Bergen County Community Development Regional Committee for Fiscal Year 2024, covering July 1st, 2024 through June 20th, 2025. I've got two mayoral appointments. I'll be appointing Mr. Coons and our CFO, David, and the council president also has to appoint two council members.
It'll be myself and Councilman Slazinski.
Okay, that being said, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, moving up to final adoption of ordinance, we have 24 Capitol 495 Capitol Ordinance. As you know, we had testimony on this last week at the last council meeting, it was a move for adoption. At this time, do I have a motion to open to public?
Mayor, before we do that, we have to call Councilman Slazinski on the roll for the last two things.
Okay.
You didn't call him on the roll.
Oh, well, he was walking in while we did it. Okay, so for the two resolutions, the two, was that what you're talking about?
The two resolutions.
Okay. So just redo the roll for the two, for this consent, and then for the...
Yes.
Okay, so for the consent agenda with 175 pulled, we had a motion by Pat? Do we need to re-motion? And then a second by Jody, and then, so we had Councilwoman Gofredo was a yes, Councilman Pignotelli was a yes, and Council President Salianni was a yes, Councilman Slazinski?
Yes.
And Councilman Talamini was a yes. Then for 175, we had a motion by Councilman Pignotelli, second by Councilman Talamini, and then Councilwoman Gofredo was a yes, and Pignotelli was a yes, Council President was a yes, Councilman Slazinski?
Yes.
Will be a yes, and Councilman Talamini was a yes. Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Back to the open.
Okay, we're back to 24 Capitol Orders 495. Do I have a motion open to public?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
You guys have your chance.
Kerry Ceramides, 41 Sue Avenue. So again, just like I said before, with ordinance 24 Capitol 945, it appears that the funds are being taken out of the Open Space Fund, which I understand it was approved to remove funds from there and distribute it to other areas. However, my concern would be, where is the money going to be replenished? So is there a plan in place to replenish the funds without forcing an open public space tax increase, especially to everyone in town?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coons?
Sure. Just some specifics. The ordinance, which is over a million dollars, there's two recreation items, irrigation upgrades, Field 7 and Red Complex bleacher replacements totaling $65,000. That portion of the ordinance is to be funded from the Open Space Trust, and we're allowed to do that now because of the referendum that was passed last year that expanded the purposes for which the Open Space Tax may be used. So to the question, the fund has about, or started the year with roughly a million dollars in it, and the tax generates something over $300,000, $300,000 plus dollars a year. The tax rate for the Open Space Tax is capped by the referendum, can fluctuate between half a cent and one cent for $100 of assessed valuation. So you're not going to see a tax increase above the one cent, which is what it's already set at. So whatever we collect in a given year based on that rate is what goes back into the fund and in the aggregate is available for use.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Anybody else from the public? Not seeing any. Motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
We're closing. Comment?
Yeah, I wanted to know if the speaker, if the questions were answered before we... As of right now, yeah, I have to look into it. Thank you.
She wants to know if the questions was answered.
So that would be a yes to close it.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
What do we vote on right now?
Close the public.
Close the public session.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, do somebody have a motion to adopt 24 Capitol 495? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call. To adopt 24 Capitol 495 Capitol ordinance.
945.
945.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slazinski?
Yes.
And Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, next we have 24 Code 946 for final adoption ordinance establishing dust control policy. Do we have a motion open to public?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Anybody wish to talk, anybody from the audience wish to address 24 Code 946 Ordinance Establishing Dust Control Policy? 24 Code 946?
I read the ordinance. It's very well written, you know, except that I think there should be an improvement. And it has to do with, you go down to definitions, dust, and after particulate matter, insert this, after particulate matter defined by the Federal Clean Air Act, the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and as the National Institutes of Health. And the one that I found out was really great is the New Jersey EPA Approval of Air Quality Implementation Plan, and that's effective as 1128, 2023. I have the information here for you guys to go peruse it, you know, not going to throw you out on the wood, but it's right here, and it gives all this stuff. And again, I think I can talk about air quality and what's in your, you know, what I'm breathing in. I mean, after all, I don't want people walking around with this, okay? So this is what we're talking about, and I'd just like to submit it to you, you know. And again, as I was saying, like, you mentioned being down the firehouse. I can't really go down there for that sort of stuff. But again, and this is what we're talking about, and you're talking about your lungs. And what I have is interstitial lung disease slash fibrosis, and it came from asbestos from when I was in service. But again, you know, I have a hard time breathing, so this is what it is, but I'd like to submit this to you. You people take a look at it, and just to put that definition into there, because somebody could come in there and say, well, what the hell is particulate matter? Busting your chops, you know, and just pretend to avoid it, you know, and just tighten it up a little bit. You know, again, that's why I'm on this. Okay, and I wrote it out for the clerk here, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Okay. Counselor question, if we wanted to incorporate that language, do you feel it's sufficient the way it is now, or should we take a look at Mr. Pritchard's before we do the final adoption?
We'd have to re-advertise it.
I would do the final adoption, and then if we feel that we need to further amend the ordinance, then reintroduce and re-amend. There's nothing we can do about this from doing that. But I think at this time, we should adopt the ordinance as is, and I think that any change to that language would be significant enough a change to require a renotice.
Okay.
So I would advise adopting it, and then if we feel we need to strengthen it, as we do with other ordinances, we're certainly free to strengthen the ordinance as we progress.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you guys are the coach, I'm not.
I'll take it.
Thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard.
Thank you.
Does anybody else from the public wish to address 24 Code 946? Not seeing any. Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second. Roll call. Closing.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt 24 Code 946, an ordinance establishing a dust control policy?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes, and I just would like to say we should, you know, look at that language, but we need this today, so, yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Terrific. All right, moving on to the work session, we have OCC advertising fees. Mr. Coons, would you like to walk us through this?
Sure. So the OCC submitted a proposal to revise the program criteria for the sponsorship program, which started a couple of years ago. What they're looking to do, perhaps better attract sponsors, is to sort of simplify the overall program structure and add some benefits there for sponsors. So for example, right now, there's two sponsor tiers, they're looking to just make, you know, one going forward, they're looking to combine different categories for nonprofits and individuals and families into one tier. They're looking to simplify the fee structure itself. Right now, there's sort of a multiplier system that can be a little confusing, and they're looking to make it just $100 annually for nonprofit organizations, individuals and families, and $200 for businesses. And in the business tier, they're proposing to sort of add an additional benefit there to allow businesses to get a slide on the bulletin board advertising your business as well. So things like that, sweeten the pot a little bit, make it easier to understand and implement in the hopes of attracting, you know, sponsors to the program.
Anybody from the council have any questions or comments?
No.
Not seeing any?
No.
All right, work session, number two, writings and roundpoles, street names. Mr. Coons?
Thanks. With the OCC, so we'll prepare an ordinance to effectuate that and introduce it at the next meeting. Writings at Roundpoles, so Lennar submitted a list of street names and numbers. The numbering protocol for the streets has gone through review internally. They're looking for approval on the names of the streets as well. So they provided that information to you. They're all related to courses, right, race tracks, things like, things of that nature. So they're just looking for any feedback they have to offer and approval of the names of the streets.
Were the names too numerous for us to know ahead of time what they are?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, would you like to look at the list?
Oh, that's what you were saying, yeah.
List the layout if you understand.
Thank you. I don't see Pinientale Court on here.
There's Belmont Court, Arlington Place, Belmont Place, Brighton Court, Derby Drive, alliteration's always good, Melbourne Drive, Newbury Lane, Cambridge Place, and Trotter Way.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else have any concerns or comment?
No.
So we agree that these are good names?
Yeah.
Resolution, break forward next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Third one, we have engineer proposal flood buyout, demolition for the houses down at Bottom of Truman to Roosevelt. We're going to carry that to the next meeting. We're not ready to discuss this under workshop at this time. Does anybody have any new business?
I have some new business.
Counsel?
There was some discussion about Madison has a lawsuit pending about affordable housing. Can we discuss that a little bit?
Mr. Coons, you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, specifically, it's not a lawsuit, at least not yet. What Madison's looking to do is file a petition with the council on unfunded mandates, basically taking the position that the recently adopted Affordable Housing Law is going to pose significant costs to all municipalities in the state. That's acknowledged, although it's not specific, it's acknowledged in the fiscal mode from OLS, but there was no funding provided in the bill for municipalities to implement what they need to do to comply with the law. So they're looking for towns to join with them in that petition filing. Where Madison said very clearly that they're willing to take the, you know, the lead on this and also to bear the whatever costs are incurred with that. They just happen to believe, and I think quite rightly, that the more towns that join in with that petition, perhaps there's a stronger case to be made for it.
It's for unmandated?
It's for this...
No, I know it's not.
So when the state passes a law...
Now, what's their contention?
Their contention is that this is cost generative to municipalities, and there's no funding provided in the law to cover those costs.
But I thought as long as it's an amendment to an existing law, you can't, you can't use that.
You can't do it in terms of regulations, you can't do it if it's something that is a constitutional issue, which may or may not come into play here. But, you know, that's, that's the argument to be made, that this is a new law, and if the state wants to proceed down this path, they need to provide funding to municipalities and not burden tax pay.
But it's an extension of the Mount Laurel decision. I don't see how they...
Well, Madison wants to do... Is there any harm if we join this?
They're not going to win.
I can't foresee any harm in joining this petition.
They're not going to win.
I just, I did have an opportunity to talk to the mayor of Madison and the borough administrator, and the way it was kind of presented to me, the state is about $1.5 billion short of funding this, so that's why they're bringing this lawsuit, trying to bring this lawsuit forward with the round for affordable housing, which is what we're dealing with right now. So in my opinion, I believe it's a good position for us to join in on this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't. I mean, if they're, you know, they're, you know, they're saying they're going to foot the bill, they're going to do all the heavy lifting, so we might as well.
For the cost, there's no harm to us.
No downside to us.
Okay. Do we require a vote on this, or as far as what?
Moving this forward, joining the lawsuit? I would put a resolution to...
Put a resolution next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Coons, can you just have a resolution for next meeting?
Well, if there's a resolution, in the meantime, I'll be in touch with Madison.
Okay, very good. Anybody else have any new business? Anybody have any old business? We did have a, we had a resident that came to the last council meeting concerning electric bikes on the sidewalk. We did have a public safety meeting that took place last week, and we did bring it to the attention of the police department, and they are of the position that they're educating the electric bike riders to, you know, respect people on the sidewalk instead of trying to run them over, so they are going to take a look at that.
Right, and there too, I believe what the captain brought up was that essentially those e-bikes are treated like regular bicycles.
Correct.
For the most part, class one and class two e-bikes, and they're allowed on sidewalks as a matter of law.
They're not allowed.
They are, they are allowed.
It's a motorized vehi, it's a motorized...
But it's a bicycle.
Yeah, but bicycles, I mean, just today, on, on Franklin, there was a, a truck hit a bicyclist, and one, a couple minutes later, a school bus came down, put the flashing lights on, and a bicyclist wasn't stopping. It eventually did, but the police officer said bicyclists have to adhere to all the rules that cars have to adhere to. So if a car isn't allowed on a sidewalk, I don't see why a motorized bicycle is allowed. That, that doesn't make sense to me. I think you should discuss with the police department again, because that officer specifically said that bicycles have to adhere to all the rules.
Yes.
So to say they're allowed on a, on a sidewalk, cars aren't allowed on the sidewalk.
But when bikes are in the roadway, that's, that's required, but bikes are also allowed on the sidewalk, as are these e-bikes. I'll, I'll share with council what, what the captain said.
But it's a, I understand the resident's point. It's a motorized bike, and they can go, I don't know, fifteen miles an hour? You get hit with a bicycle going fifteen miles an hour, you're going to get hurt, but a person on a regular pedal bike can't do fifteen miles an hour.
All right, although we, listen, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with the councilman. I think it's just a matter of that was their interpretation of the law, but we'll bring it back to committee.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't understand that.
Okay. Anybody else have any old business? Not seeing any. Let's move on to council committee liaison reports. Let's start with Mr. Talamini.
Sure. First, let me just say thank you to everyone that helped with the Memorial Day Parade. That was really a nice, nice event, and the, and the ceremony down at the Veterans Park was really nice, too. But it's, it's all the volunteers, and it's great seeing everybody line up for the parade, seeing all the kids. I think we need, we need more people watching the parade, though we do, we go through a lot of, a lot of effort, everyone in town, to make sure that we honor our fallen heroes. And I just, I just wish we'd had more, more, more attendance from the residents. It's important to recognize our, our fallen heroes. Just recreation. We have the baseball and softball parade this Saturday at nine o'clock. We're looking forward to see Mayor Kamala make his first pitch.
Hopefully reach home plate.
We have to start warming up.
The money's he doesn't.
The Great Oak Park Pavilion opening is June eighth, from noon to five. It's going to be a great day for Oakland, and signups for football, baseball, day camp, cheer, and soccer are now going on, and the information can be found at www.oaklandrec.org. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes, for the senior citizens. June sixth at one P M., we're hosting a patriotic wreath workshop. The cost is ten dollars, and all supplies are included. Limited space is still available. June twentieth, start of summer BBQ bash. Cost is twelve dollars, a barbecue lunch, and musical entertainment by the Wildcats. To register for either event, please call the senior center at two oh one, four oh five, seven seven, three one. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Salianni?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the public events committee for a great job. Man, Chopper, do you want to say anything about the parade? I know you, you came here to talk, so I know you want to talk a little bit.
No, it's all right.
All right.
I appreciate everybody helped out.
Yeah, so...
Especially the DPW.
Yeah, so...
They got me a barrel of wheels, and I got the horse poop, so I was happy. I was upgraded this year.
But I do want to thank the committee, especially Man, for putting it together. As Russ said, it was a great time, and I think it was very good for the community. On that note, spin right to the DPW. Well, I thank the DPW that weekend, they had, they set the park, they set the parade route. I think they even had baseball tournaments down the rec field they did, so they had a full crew working all weekend. So great job by DPW, basically working the entire more than weekend. People forget how much they do for the community, and thank them very much. Our flood commission meeting, our next flood commission meeting is going to be on June eleventh at seven thirty P M., and the next public events committee meeting will be on June, are we doing June eleventh, seven o'clock, Chopper?
We're doing it early, right?
Yeah.
Because we called, so it's a tradition. I'm not sure. I think it's the third.
June third.
It's the third.
June third, yes, June third, seven P M. Be ready for the carnival. And then another reminder about the carnival, that starts on June twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and that's it.
Thank you. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm sorry, forgot one thing on the environmental commission. I know it was late to the meeting, I had a first aid call. On the recycling plant, the class B recycling, you discussed it before I came. I'd just like to thank all, everyone that was involved in that, specifically Lee Hayman on the environmental commission. Lee Hayman is an environmental engineer. He gave a nails-on, spot-on assessment of that recycling center, and of course, all our other professionals, Mr. Uchemic, and the support that we received from Senator Shapizzi, the mayor of Pumpedon Lakes. I don't want to leave anybody out. If I did, I apologize, but I am so excited when I read that, that we were successful, and it's due to everyone who, who really pushed forward for that to be declined, and I, I thank everyone. That's it, Mayor.
Yeah, and Mr. Pignotelli, my one is to remind the residents also, that video is still on, online on YouTube, so if they want to see that presentation to the county commissioners that we held at the library with Mr. Hayman's testimony and then everybody else, it's still online. Thank you. Counselor Slazinski?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to start off by apologizing to everyone for my lateness tonight, couldn't be helped. Also, I'd like to thank everyone who worked so hard on the parade, did a fantastic job, everyone who marched and participated. It was a wonderful time, really, it was a really great time. For my committee reports from the green team, the green team is seeking a secretary for the group. This is a part-time position that supports the activity of the group. If interested, the green team meets on the fourth Thursday of every month. The compensation for the position is twelve hundred dollars annually, and you can submit your application or resume to kathygurney@adminsec@oakland nj.org by Friday, June fourteenth. Also on Thursday, May thirtieth, at six thirty, at the senior center, they will host the Pollinators. This event is a free movie and expert discussion with the speakers Rich Stell and Werf from Werf's Honey and Oakland Beekeeper, and Mary Purr from the NJ Odovan Laura Murr Sanctuary. Also on Sunday, June second, first Sunday hikes continue on Skyline Drive. Signups for this event is on eventbrite.com. Also on Tuesday, June fourth, at six thirty P M. at the library, they will have Living Safely with Wildlife in Your Neighborhood. This program is brought to everyone by a collaboration between the green team and the Oakland Board of Health, featuring Carol Tyler, who is a registered certified animal control officer. Register online at the library's website or by calling. From public safety, for the month of April, officers conducted five hundred and forty-one motor vehicle stops and issued five hundred and sixty motor vehicle summonses. Officers also made one arrest for driving while intoxicated and one arrest for possession of narcotics. From the library, the big news is that the OPL now offers Press Reader to all library cardholders. This is a digital newsstand featuring seven thousand plus of the world's most popular newspapers and magazines. You can use this service on a PC or download the app and start reading today. Lastly, on June eleventh at six thirty P M., they will host a beginner's guide to hiking, presented by Mario Medici. The program will cover everything you need to know to start hiking locally and get the most out of the experience. Register online or by calling the library. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGafredo?
I don't have that much to report. In my reports earlier this month, OCC filmed the Oakland Memorial Day Parade, and that will be televised every day at six P M. and seven A M., and is available twenty-four seven on YouTube on demand. OCC's next meeting is July first at seven P M. here in this room. Access for All's next meeting is June fifth, seven thirty P M., it's in the senior center. And the Shade Tree next meeting is June third at seven thirty P M. in the senior center. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Okay, bills to be paid. Councilwoman Gofredo?
Total bills to be paid, nine hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and one cent. So moved.